We'll call our meeting order now. This is Craig McLean, of the Town and Pittsburgh Commissioners for Monday, 7/12/2016. And we will, uh, open the meeting with a moment of silence. I ask for us to think about, um, our former Commissioner and Mayor Charles Duviney, who is ill and in the hospital, um, and, um, if you think him and his family during our moment of silence. Thank you. Jay Carroll, give your question.
Good morning. Good afternoon. I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, I'll just may have to pull them up closer to you since we have them so far back.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we have removed items two and three from the consent agenda and placed them as one and two of new business. The motion is carried unanimously. And so, uh, is there a motion to approve consent agenda as it stands? Move by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Pamela Walton. Those in favor please indicate a same eye. Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. The next, uh, do we have approval of the modified agenda then for balance of the meeting? Move by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor please indicate a same eye. Those opposed. Thank you. Um, the first item is then a public hearing, and so we need a motion to jump into public hearing. Move by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor please indicate a same eye. Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Do you have the presentation for public hearing of the Chatham Park planned district election? The initial presentation.
That's Mayor Porter. Tonight, you're going to hold a public hearing on four of the phases, four of the elements, uh, the additional elements for Chatham Park's additional elements. Those being phasing, parking, signage, signage, lighting. As you recall, the committee, the additional elements committee made a presentation during your last board meeting on their recommendations, and they had thirteen recommendations that they went over. Those were included in your packet for the record. Additionally, comments that staff had received from other individuals and outside organizations were also included in your packet. And I suspect some of those folks are here tonight to, to give you some comments in person. Staff included our comments as well on these first four elements. And, um, generally, through the theme throughout most individual comments, community comments, and staff comments, and the committee comments, uh, were generally the same on these first four elements. There was sort of a theme there. The being phasing was lacking in detail, and needed a little bit more from Chatham Park. Uh, phasing and/or and the public facilities element that we'll get to in March could have similar or same information between those two, so the town would be able to give the no phasing of the project a little bit more comprehensively. Um, the parking and loading and signage, uh, both of those elements. Staff finds that these are typical ele- uh, ordinances of, of communities in the triangle that you might find either same tax or care here. And that there may need to be some refining of the UDO and as best to how we're going to address these, these items before we're really ready to, um, have Chatham Park have a different set of ordinances than what we have. Additionally, in signage, staff is recommending that we do not give up sign permit control in the villages and in seven point one, commercial areas, which Chatham Park, that we still be a part of the mechanism to approve these, these signage, the sign request or signs in these areas. That would be consistent with the committee's recommendation as well. And then lighting, that's typical of some areas, some communities in the, in the area that you would find, um, and that maybe there needs to be more work. And I think you've heard from a number of, uh, committee members and community folks about having, incorporating dark sky into their, into Chatham Park's ordinances as well as the UDO. Generally, um, there's a prevent, general provisions section that, uh, preference the elements and that, um, that went through definitions and general provisions of development within Chatham Park. One of the key, key terms throughout the, the review is this development review committee of Chatham Park would work with the town to review plans. I'm unsure how this is going to work. I think this is a comment that needs to be explored with Chatham Park a little bit more. I know it's a requirement of, of a master plan, but I don't think the master plan envisions all that may be encompassing what I'm, what I'm hearing about in Chatham Park. Um, I see the development review committee and private developers being in a contractual agreement between the two, and that the town reacts to whatever we, we get from a developer and not in this, I don't know, this three-way relationship where Chatham Park is the sole entity that can, can work with the town, after which the development, the developers have already went through a review process through Chatham Park without the town making it up. So I'm, I'm a little unsure how this development review committee is going to work. Um, and I don't want there to be any, um, appearance that the town is giving up any control on development within Pittsburgh. Um, there's language that the committee included in their comments and I would include as well as buffering of development should be included on the developed property and not allowed to be, um, on adjoining properties owned by others. That language just needs to be refined from Chatham Park's standpoint. Um, language regarding allowing developments to not develop to town standards is not needed because what they're talking about here is someone opting out or opting in to the additional elements when the additional elements hasn't been approved. The way it works is that they, they go by the town ordinances until these are approved. But this whole, whole language here is a tool, uh, funny to me and is not needed. And then administrative alternatives decisions should always be based on criteria as written in applicable elements. Without such criteria, a decision that will generally be made by me or someone in this position may seem arbitrary, and we need to have criteria if we're going to waive or adjust something. It can't be just based off of, well, that's the way we want it, and that needs to be refined a lot more, uh, in the elements. Um, so I will be here to take questions. We know we have a number of people who want to speak tonight. What I've sort of laid out is that you would hear from me, you would hear from the public, and then Chatham Park would like to speak. And then the recommendation is to move the planning board for, for formal recommendation. What I, what I'm pretty sure you're going to hear from Chatham Park is that they're going to go back and, and refine these elements. They're going to do another draft. Staff will receive this draft hopefully sometime in the next few weeks, I'm hearing before Christmas. We will review that and see how extensive the, the revisions are and get that to the next planning board meeting that we can get that to, um, hopefully in, in January. Next planning board meeting will be January fourth. Uh, we'll see, see where we go from there. But I'm here to answer any questions that may come up, um, and from the public or from you all, and Chatham Park's here as well. Any questions initially?
An observation. And regarding the, uh, development review committee, my understanding of the master plan is that the purpose of that private entity has nothing to do with the town. It is kind of the initial gatekeeper because of the myriad requirements of the master plan for tracking all kinds of data. This was a mechanism by which the developer, Chatham Park, would ensure that any other purchaser of land within Chatham Park, developer within Chatham Park, came through their body first such that there was a consistent way of presenting the data to the town. And their approval is not binding on the town. A developer cannot rely on it for any rights to go develop. It only comes from the town. But it was a, I think, a really helpful tool so that we weren't, when the town wasn't getting information wildly different formats, not hitting the targets, not presenting the data.
Yeah, and I think staff appreciates that, and, and I think it will work. And we've been working with Chatham Park to refine that part of the process. So by me making comments doesn't necessarily mean that it's not going to work. It's just, I want, I want to make sure that it does have the intent of what you all wanted to see in, in the master plan and that there is no, um, that people are aware that once they get Chatham Park approval, it doesn't mean that they're approved. And I want that as a stone record coming from the beginning of part here. So that's, that's really why the comments.
We have seven speakers signed up tonight for, excuse me, five speakers signed up for the public hearing. And the first speaker is Chuck Smith.
Um, he's the applicant. If you want to hear from the public first.
Debbie Tenell.
My name is Debbie Tenell, 282 Moore Mountain Road. Thank you for this opportunity to speak briefly on the draft elements of, um, Chatham Park. In speaking about Chatham Park, Mr. Roll, the developer, said, "You don't get credit for doing what's required." So we're stepping way past the requirements here. Mr. Smith, another developer, said, "We want this to be an exemplary project, and we're going to make sure it will be." Mr. Roll also said, "We have our playbook, and we will adapt as needed. We don't play every position. We just assemble the players and handle different aspects. We, as neighbors of Chatham Park, playing different positions, do support the desire to step beyond state and local requirements and produce an exemplary life, work, play Chatham Park for the entire ecosystem of all residents, human and those without human voice. We have bobcat, bald eagles, osprey, turtles, and the Hall River, plants and sky as our neighbors. We give credit to Mr. Roll and Mr. Smith, and we are going to go beyond some requirements, and we hope the planning will be a larger team to care for all, those who are here now and those who come after." Regarding the, um, development phasing, parking, and loading, on page six of the CPI element, it says, "The town can use this element as one of the tools to develop its comprehensive plan that guides the provision of transportation improvements, water, sewer, fire, and police protection, parks, and recreation facilities, et cetera," focusing on that. "As we wait for the Pittsburgh UDO, we would like to remind you about the findings of the Pittsburgh Park and Recreation Advisory Board. In the May 2014 memo of the Pittsburgh Ward, they stated that the Pittsburgh Land Use Plan should be honored. Honor the 2,000-foot conservation, open space designation along the Hall River as adopted in the 2012 Land Use Plan. Further, quote, "The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board concur with the recommendation from the Lawrence Group Consultant to require thirty percent of Chatham Park's land area to be set aside for conservation and open space. We have seen evidence that the Pittsburgh area's citizens highly value conservation and feel that this provision is reflective of our community values for preserving land in its inherent value." Excuse me, I, that resonates with me. "We urge you to protect our natural resources and park recreation space adjacent to the Hall River. Let's indeed step way past the requirements and help Mr. Roll and Mr. Smith create truly exemplary, exemplary project." On page fifty-four, "The CPI Plan for Parking and Servicing. Each UVA shall be paved unless alternative materials are approved by the planning director. We suggest using pervious surfaces, not impervious paved surfaces, to help Mr. Roll and Mr. Smith create an exemplary project." Regarding signage and lighting, "We encourage Pittsburgh to consult the International Dark Sky Association Model Lighting Ordinance to promote no spillover light and glare control in all sections of Chatham Park, including the villages and section seven point one. Chatham Park must step past basic requirements and really become an exemplary project. Chatham County and Pittsburgh are not the sort, quote, are not sort of the forgotten part of this region, as Mr. Smith once said. We may be out of mind for some, yet we have kept the best in mind for our neighbors. And you, our elected leaders of Pittsburgh, can play the position of stewards for our neighborhood and ecosystem here in Chatham County and Pittsburgh, and that includes Chatham Park." Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up is, is it Darren Porter?
Dawn.
Dawn Porter.
Not him for my time, actually. Hi there. Dawn Porter, 883 Bynum Road in Bynum. Um, I've actually contacted most of you via email, and I appreciate Commissioner Bynum's coming out to, coming to one of several meetings that we have had in Bynum with close to fifty, up to seventy-five members expressing their concerns and questions and even excitement about what's happening with Chatham Park. I will certainly share the more details with you beyond the first letter that I've sent to you and can provide another copy of that series, but wanted to talk specifically about some major concerns echoing what Debbie and others have said around the dark sky and lighting. In our meetings, we have had lots of concerns come up from neighbors about what that, the lighting around Chatham Park may indicate for our river, particularly with the recommendation of adopting a dark sky ordinance. Over ten groups meet there on a regular basis, astronomy clubs, uh, walking groups, et cetera, that come out for the dark skies specifically overlooking the Hall River. Our concerns with the elements themselves is not seeing enough restrictions on polluting light, nor sharing what may happen with existing communities when electrical needs will become a priority for those existing communities. We definitely would encourage adoption of non-polluting light language within the elements, and we feel like probably adopting a suggestion as Debbie shared with you, a dark sky ordinance would be the best and quickest efficient route around that. We do intend to come along of each of these meetings to share the specific, up to six-page of notes that each of the members have shared with us as far as their concerns, but we'll communicate those directly with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Collington?
My name's Liz Collington, 390 Rocky Hills Road, Pittsburgh. I'm in the EGJ. Um, I've been going over these additional elements for months, and everything here is in dire need of substantial revision, or in some cases, total replacement. Each of the four specific sections has discrepancies and errors or other problems, and I'm submitting detailed written comments on these four sections, as well as the very important introductory section. There may be little public interest in aspects which sound uncontroversial, like parking, signage, and lighting, but I was disappointed to find that even these provisions fall very short of what the board should expect. Quite obviously, the phasing section does not in fact constitute a proper phasing plan. However, there's some other alarming problems here in these elements and the introduction. In the general provisions, it says that only the master plan and these additional elements would be, quote, "The town's regulations for Chatham Park, and future ordinances would not apply, including the proposed Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO." Superficial reading of this has already been cause for concern, including by the town's review committee, but once the UDO is finally approved, it would replace existing zoning and other related ordinances that have been incorporated into it. So those few aspects in the master plan that default to town control and town ordinances would be moved once it refers to regulations that have been repealed and replaced by the UDO. What happens to our building standards, which Chatham Park picked up from the watershed ordinance? The list of my concerns on this goes kind of on and on. Um, the master plan and these elements are not as comprehensive as our current or proposed town regulations. In addition, neither document, the master plan nor the additional elements, once refers to any role for our planning board. This is even more disturbing when the introduction to the elements expands the role of the developer's own development review committee with some of its powers to be hidden in restricted covenants that the town has not seen, including future covenants which Chatham Park could place on its property. We cannot allow the secret and unaccountable committee to substitute for our planning board and for town oversight of specific plans. These elements were just supposed to flesh out the approved master plan, but Chatham Park Investors is now using them to make some changes to the master plan without clearly flagging what those changes are and without going through the process required to amend that plan. If they can change the master plan this way, the town ought to take this opportunity to fix the various problems still remaining in the master plan. It certainly empowers you to revise every deficient or undesirable aspect of these elements. For these and other reasons, I would urge the board to obtain a comprehensive legal review and explanation of how the current master plan and all the elements tie together in terms of what it would allow before approving any one of these elements. The phasing section has been worded in such a way that the town must prioritize Chatham Park's future needs over other current town needs, no matter how urgent. The simple text revision as outlined in my written comments would change that. The town also needs a more defined phasing plan that ensures that future development is gradual and predictable, and that it can't proceed faster or more widely than the town can afford and its infrastructure can support. Many of the parking requirements are too vague and not sufficiently tied to specific uses, as they are in the draft UDO. Substituting those might prevent too much and too rapid speculative building of office parks and shopping plazas in Chatham Park. Doing that might also prevent overextended infrastructure to zombie developments. I also support your review committee's recommendation of the dark sky compliant lighting ordinance for Chatham Park and the town, and the current lighting element is certainly in need of revision for that and many other reasons. Several of the elements would not apply in home or in park, and nor would town regulations to many areas of Chatham Park, including the undefined villages. But in addition, one of the general provisions allows deferrals of any of these elements until possibly it would be too late, such as the housing lot stage, hardly appropriate for many of these twelve requirements, which should be addressed at each appropriate stage of development approval, uh, such stage of development approvals as would remain under these elements. Signage regulations are a mess, and I have detailed pages and pages and pages of comments on need of revision. However, I'd just like to point out that we shouldn't allow Chatham Park to erect future use signs, whether they call them future use signs or whether they are permanent icon signs, too far in advance of those actual amenities being provided, whether schools, parks, stores, or whatever else. The town should not be a part of each of the defrauding of potential home buyers, home builders, or business projects by leaving such signs up for many years in advance. None of these so-called elements should be approved as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Ron Happ.
My apologies to the committee and to the attendees. I've got a sign sheet. I apologize, I was not prepared to speak this evening.
Chuck Smith, do you wish to speak now or someone else on behalf of the governor?
Uh, this is the last of the public hearing comments, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, before you speak, is there any help from the general public who wishes to speak but did not sign up? Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm going to be briefly speak to the lighting element, um, and then more to the process following this after that. But when we, when we originally put the lighting element together, we looked at two different groups of information. One is local, regional lighting ordinances, just to look at format and the way they went about laying out municipal ordinance. Secondly, we did have a copy of the model ordinance that the International Dark Sky Association put out. So we knew that, uh, that was an important issue just from different public meetings we had had, not without necessarily referring to that group. We knew that that particular issue was important to people. So we were paying attention to that and trying to include elements or issues that were presented in that model ordinance without copying the model ordinance, for example. During the deliberation by the additional elements committee, we were presented with a copy of the model ordinance light that they had come up with. So as part of our due diligence, we, we corresponded with the IES, which is the Illuminating Engineering Society, that had their name on that document, um, to look more into that document. They were surprised to see this document because they had no knowledge of it, they had not endorsed it, they had not approved it, and they had in no way supported it. So I'm simply here to caution you on information that you're getting in different places without following up on it, just to make sure of, of its accuracy. We are still in the process of, of working with them and with Duke Energy because whatever lighting ordinance you adopt, and I know part of the recommendation from the committee was that not only would Chatham Park, um, adopt a dark sky ordinance, but you would as well, as opposed to the lighting orders you have in place, and I think even with what's proposed. And I'm not sure if, is there anything proposed? There's nothing Duke proposed in the UDO, but they're recommending that for you as well, not only Chatham Park. We're working with Duke since Duke would be the provider of many of the lights that would be part of this, just to understand what their capabilities are, and working with the IES as they, uh, work through this issue of what's, what exactly, uh, where this, where this model ordinance light came from and what's, what, um, has been involved in the production of that. Um, and we will be revising our proposals based on those conversations and based on the comments that we've gotten, so you'll be seeing that. As I mentioned during, uh, we had a question related to this during the committee, uh, the, the way we see revisions occurring, we haven't wanted to provide revisions after the planning board deliberated. So what we had proposed was that we take the comments from the committee, take the comments from staff, take the comments from the planning board's original deliberation, then we would make revisions that would come back to you, to the planning board for their consideration, so that they are not just reviewing only old information. They get to look at what we proposed based on all the comments that we've heard. And then the distinction I would make in what Jeff presented, as opposed to rewriting the element, we would be addressing each of the comments, uh, and then at that point where you consider that to be. was that not only would Chatham Park adopt a dark sky ordinance, but you would as well, as opposed to the lighting ordinance you have in place, and I think even with what's proposed. I'm not sure if there's anything proposed, there's nothing Duke proposed in the UDO, but they're recommending that for you as well, not only Chatham Park. We're working with Duke, since Duke would be the provider of many of the lights that would be part of this, just to understand what their capabilities are, and working with the IES as they work through this issue of what's, what exactly, where this model ordinance light came from, and what's, what has been involved in the production of that. And we will be revising our proposals based on those conversations and based on the comments that we've gotten, so you'll be seeing that. As I mentioned during, we had a question related to this during the committee, the way we see revisions occurring, we haven't wanted to provide revisions after the planning board deliberated. So what we had proposed was that we take the comments from the committee, take the comments from staff, take the comments from the planning board's original deliberation, then we would make revisions that would come back to the planning board for their consideration, so that they are not just reviewing only old information, they get to look at what we proposed based on all the comments that we've heard. And then the distinction I would make, and Jeff presented, as opposed to rewriting the element, we would be addressing each of the comments, and then, at that point where you consider that to be adequate, to then follow up and rewrite portions of the element that affect what those answers are, that we would then produce the final language of the element itself, so that we're not continually rewriting that document and then revising and revising it. We would address the issues as they're presented. For example, change the parking standard of this. Yes, we will do, we will change that parking standard. And then, once you get those yeses, you get to, or in some instances, there would be, no, we're not going to change that, and you get to decide, okay, this is acceptable, this is exemplary, or this is not, and you need to continue making these changes. So that's the process we propose, but it would, those revisions would go to the planning board, they would get to act on that before then it went to you after their vote. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thoughts, comments, questions?
I would say this, Jeff Smith, that I have seen public hearing processes become so distinctive that the public gets discouraged coming to speak, and it's processes too long, and there are too many revisions and drafts and comments. As much as I want to see it be right, I also want to see it in a compact sort of way that the public has a really good idea of what needs and really need to go to, and when the comments need to be formed or turned in or whatever, so.
Yeah, I would absolutely agree with that. When I've dealt with this in other municipalities, we have, as opposed to continuing public hearings, if there are substantive changes that have been made that are outside of what has been considered, then those issues, those particular issues, would go back to the planning board and for public hearing again, but not the entire document. So you're just reducing it, you're sort of calling down what's been presented down to what those particular, not necessarily a word, but it could be, you know, a certain issue that you consider substantive enough to be worthy of going back to public hearing again. But I agree with you, we're not trying to, I mean, I've been trying, we've been trying to come up with a way to simplify this as much as possible, because it is a complicated and large process.
I guess the only problem with that is trying to determine what is substantive, but I believe that language is already in our ordinance, is not, Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Further speakers on the issue of the additional element. Those first four are, are there any questions, new board? Not with entertaining a motion to go out of public hearing. Move back panel to the wall, this second by Michael Tiago, who has a favor, please indicate by being aye. We are sent out of public hearing, we enter the regular meeting agenda and the citizen's expression period. We have six speakers signed up to speak on public expression. Well, no, actually, we have five. Santa signed up as number two, so I think that, I don't think he's jurisdictionally appropriate here. But Jan Nichols, first speaker.
He doesn't live in the town, Miss.
Pardon? No, I don't live in the town, but I live right next to page three. Okay. I'm sorry, you know, it's really funny, but right past that beam, the audio drops. It's amazing, because you can hear wonderfully up here, but in the chief seats, we are not hearing so well back there. Anyway, good evening, I'm Jan Nichols, I reside at 148 Fairview Road in Mont Gore. I'm addressing you tonight as a board member of Sustainable Prosperity Incorporated, a local nonprofit and community development corporation. Part of our charter is to address downtown revitalization, which brings me to this meeting tonight. A few weeks ago, I addressed the county commissioners during their public input session regarding their 2017-2018 CIP plan. The focus of my input was the county's downtown annex and associated county buildings south of the traffic circle. I requested that the county not move forward with any expenditures and plans for renovations and improvements of the annex and old agricultural building, and in effect eliminate those budget items. The county commissioners heard my voice and the voice of others speaking that evening. They put these plans on hold and are now open to joint planning and cooperation with the town and other stakeholders regarding the annex and surrounding area. Tonight, I respectfully request that the town immediately reach out to the county commissioners and county staff to establish a process for the town and county to jointly plan the area south of the traffic circle. This communication should include a desire for the town and county to work with CCCC, the Economic Development Corporation, the Pittsburgh Business Association, the Main Street Program, and other stakeholders in the community to finalize and implement a downtown vision plan that builds on the conceptual master plan approved by the town of Pittsburgh in 2014. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Virginia Penley?
My name is Virginia Penley, and I live at 465 Rosswood Road in the Mans Chapel precinct of Chatham County. I have lived in the area for over 45 years, and at my current address in North Chatham for over 30 years. During this timeframe, my husband and I owned a portion of the Cat's Cradle and a store that I ran on Franklin Street in Chapel Hill for 10 years, which gave me a good insight into what made the downtown in Chapel Hill work for merchants and the changes that were not very beneficial for merchants. For most of this time, my focus and the focus of my friends has been Chapel Hill and Carboro. However, during the last 10 years, I have witnessed a lot of positive change in and around Pittsburgh, and like many others, we have shifted our consumer patterns and our daily routines to focus on Chatham County and especially Pittsburgh. I attribute these changes to the new opportunities and businesses in Pittsburgh, as well as the improvements to the downtown. A few weeks ago, I addressed the Chatham Commissioners during their CIP public hearing process. I was there to encourage them to incorporate into their CIP process a strong level of planning and cooperation with Pittsburgh and the other municipalities. As a former merchant in Chapel Hill and customer of businesses in Pittsburgh's downtown district, I firmly believe that the county could positively impact the downtown by eliminating its old buildings such as the annex and the old Ag Building. Imagine a gorgeous open area between the old courthouse and the new judicial center. Think about the economic impact that more public parking will have on Chatham County and Pittsburgh. Consider the statement that well-designed new buildings will make for the town and the county. As a former retailer and small business owner, I urge the town to immediately reach out to the county and to work jointly on this plan for this area, which would include the teardown of the annex and the old Ag Building. Investing in such a vision will be a boon for the town and county and provide a healthy return to the community for years to come.
Thank you, Virginia. Pam Cashroga?
My name's Pam Cashroga, and I'm one of the people who live in Pittsburgh. And I'm here as a private citizen. I'm not a business person, but unlike a lot of folks in Chatham County and the new residents in Pittsburgh, I grew up here, and I'm a native daughter of Chatham County. My family has lived in Chatham County for generations, and some of our fine farmland is in the bottom of Jordan Lake, and I was born in the middle of Jordan Lake before it was a lake. I was part of one of the first integrated classes to graduate from Northwood High School before it moved over to the new building. I called it the new building, now it's an old building, and it was new to me. But I remember when Pittsburgh was a sleepy town with one police officer, a few restaurants, and no nightlife. It rolled up at 5:30, and everybody went home. And I can remember when people thought that our downtown was dying, and I actually saw it dying and being sleepy, and, I mean, you remember, there was nothing to do here, you know? And today, there's a buzz around town, and we're in the Main Street Program, and there are restaurants that actually stay open past 9 o'clock. And on top of that, you can have a mixed drink. But I also remember a time before the annex existed, and the area south of the old courthouse was beautiful meadow. Well, we may not get a meadow, but we need parking. When you talk to people who live here and shop here, there is no place to park. There is no place for people to, I mean, this would be a great place for people to gather, also, not just parking. And I'm asking you tonight, I'm here to request that the town of Pittsburgh work with Chatham County and restore the south area of the circle to its former beauty by tearing down the annex and eliminating the old Ag Building and reimagining the area with Pittsburgh and other communities' stakeholders. I provided essentially this same message to the county commissioners a few weeks ago, which thankfully they heard. The current vision plan that the town approved can be amended, and the town and county can work together to build new buildings, improve underground infrastructures in the area, and even jointly develop a parking deck. We have the opportunity to press the reset button here and create some amazing spaces in our downtown that will become memorable places in the community and provide economic opportunity for our residents, businesses, by attracting more customers to Chatham County, which is what we want in Pittsburgh. So in closing, please move forward with the county and other stakeholders, and let's work together and redevelop this area of the circle and create something great for the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leslie Landis?
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Leslie Landis, and I live at 21 Randolph Court here in Pittsburgh, but I haven't always been here. My earliest memory of Pittsburgh is from 1987, when I was exploring the area on day trips from what was then my new home in Raleigh. At that time, there were several places along Original Highway 64, which was then only two lanes, where trees from either side of the road grew together and touched over top, creating a lush green tunnel. I recall that as we got closer to Pittsburgh, in my recollection and how that's often colored, the green tunnel framed a towered building and eventually opened up to reveal the historic Chatham County Courthouse building. Now, I live here, and I've grown to deeply love this town, that I was immediately enchanted with. I'm a member of the Pittsburgh Business Association and a member of the Small Town Main Street Committee. I'm also an arts advocate, I'm on the board of the Arts Council. I'm an impatient gardener, and I'm a graphic designer. Designed by definition is planning, and planning is essential to convey a sense of place and enrich the experience of discovery and the story that unfolds from that discovery. The stories being told about Pittsburgh and Chatham County as its county seat, when you're in our downtown, don't convey the place I know. The heavy, dark, and maze-like annex building and the agricultural auditorium on the south rim of our traffic circle don't fit here. Fortunately, I think we have a chance to remake this. We can right these wrongs. As previous speakers mentioned, I also went to the county a few weeks ago during their CIP public hearing process and asked them to remove the annex building as well as the adjacent buildings. As members of this board likely know, in meetings hosted by the Pittsburgh Business Association and the Main Street Group, we've presented to citizens, merchants, and other engaged parties a version of the downtown vision plan conceived by Kim Lee Horn that shows a public park and/or more parking in the area where the current annex is located. This solution provides an open vista between the new Justice Center and the historic courthouse, and it's been received with great enthusiasm. This change would be aesthetically pleasing, it'd be helpful to visitors seeking a positive downtown experience, which starts with parking, and it would provide major economic stimulus to the downtown and to Chatham County. I'm here tonight to encourage the town to reach out to the county at its next meeting on December 19th, and let them know that you're ready, willing, and able to begin work on a joint planning process that includes the area south of the traffic circle. The drive into Pittsburgh can be beautiful and kind of magical again, and that magic will begin with collaboration between the town of Pittsburgh and Chatham County, working together on our downtown vision plan. I thank you all for your service, and I hope you have a great holiday. Thanks.
Sandy Power?
I think you've heard everything that I would have said, but in short, five of us addressed the county during their CIP program or their public hearing a couple weeks ago, and then Doug Evans actually jumped up spontaneously to join us. So we had six people address the county commissioners on this exact issue of cooperation, working together, and requesting that the county reconsider what they're doing with their buildings. And we're just here this evening to encourage you strongly to reach out, because the reception was good. I went, I attended and a few others, including Commissioner-elect, who's now Commissioner, Mike Dasher, the follow-up meetings when they went over their budget, and the county commissioners voted unanimously to put a hold on that, and they're waiting to hear from us. And so we're just here tonight to say, we're here to support you, we're here to help you, the time is now to reach out. They want to hear from the town, because none of us can speak on behalf of the town, but I'm hoping that you'll reach out and say, yes, we want to work together and figure out what we can do on that area of the plan that really the county controls. It's their land, it's their buildings, but they need the town to say that you, as a leader, want to see something happen. And I think we have a unique opportunity that may not come along again, because they're open to it right now, and we have a plan that you approved, and there's been a long process. I know that Michael has been working on this with others on a small part of it, but I think that this would be a great jump forward for us. The other part of my input to them that I think relates to the town is simply that during their CIP, they had sections of it that were addressing their water and sewer, and I reminded them that it might be useful for them to work with the town and figure out a way to help the town address some of its connections, because the county has recently, at least in the last five years, put in a tank over by the Judicial Center, that big green tank that you'll see that creates water pressure to fire for fire. They have one at Belmont Point, which was privately installed, there's one over, I believe, by the new jail. And each one of those pieces of infrastructure are hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, perhaps as much as a half million dollars. It depends on how big it is and the size of the water lines and other engineering. So I asked the county, and I had met with Dan Lamontaine privately, I said, can't the county work with the town, and I know in previous meetings I've attended, you are working on this, to make these connections in the town, so that private developers, public developers, and institutional developers, like the school system, for instance, do not have to spend $200,000 to $500,000 for infrastructure that really would not be needed if some of these things were addressed and if we were cooperating in addressing them? So they were open to that, I know that Fred is open to that, and I'm just saying that it seems like there's a lot of good communication, and this is the time for the town to of good communication and this is the time for the town to reach out and work with the county on that and get them to consider helping us with that, because obviously our budget is much more limited in comparison, but to me, it would make a lot of sense for them to help you make the connections as opposed to funding this type of infrastructure on a side-by-side basis. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to say that there have been, and you know there have been, some preliminary meetings, very preliminary, so I thank you all for speaking to encourage us to continue those communications. There's a lot that goes on in this town, but thank you. Our next agenda item, our commissioner update. I would like to, in the last couple of weeks, I've been to some amazing events. First of all, the Arts Studio is going to the weekend in December. I've always seen the signs, I've never been before, but had a grandson here over the weekend who was just thrilled to be able to get to speak to people who do woodcraft and metalcraft, and it was just a real special thing for him. On the 1st of December, some of us participated in a STEM judging at Perry Harrison. We created and studied projects which were done by fourth and fifth graders, just absolutely amazing. It made me feel that our future generation coming on is going to be well-prepared to handle all kinds of things. Most of them were dealing with effects of flooding and stormwater, dealing with stormwater, which is a pretty sophisticated concept for fourth and fifth graders who did not sound engineer.
Yes.
On the 8th of December, I attended an official, elected officials luncheon with the members of the elected officials from Triangle area, sponsored by the Mormon Church, which are just an amazing bringing together of people who have done things in their communities, police, fire, voiced out people in disaster services. It was just a wonderful experience. And then, of course, yesterday, we had our Christmas parade, which I think was the very best Christmas parade we've ever had here. It was not only fully attended as far as floats and things like that, but there were so many people along the street from the very beginning until the very end. And a point of personal privilege, I think John Bonnet and I were sworn in a year ago this meeting, and so we've now, I suppose in a sense, graduated from being novices to only slightly less novices. So it was wonderful to think about this past year and also to wish John a happy birthday from yesterday. Are there any other commissioners who wish to report on meetings that they've attended in the community?
Come on, that's in the PBA is meeting this Wednesday. They're regularly scheduled meeting, and of course, they've been doing a great job with all the holidays, holidays celebrations. I'd like to make mention of the Main Street program and, in fact, all the coordination that is going on presently with the town and the county as it pertains, and the NCDOT as it pertains to the traffic circle improvements, and specifically the two northwest, northeast corners of the former town square, which are county-owned properties and how we're working with them to resurface those parking lots so that they remain parking lots but are more user-friendly for gatherings of people when parking is not so specific in events and whatnot. It'll be a more friendly area than just asphalt. Working with Fred Royal, we're also proposing to put in a stormwater device, trying to recognize the importance of treating nutrients in the downtown area. So happy to report that that is going well. There is some final coordination that needs to go on between the town, Main Street, Kim Lee Horn, and DOT, but I think we're making really progress.
Thank you.
I just want to mention that I've been to Pittsburgh for such reflection of Pittsburgh. One of them is Tommy Edwards. He's such a treasure here in Pittsburgh. He celebrated, their dad celebrated their 45th anniversary of the house, which was sold out and well-attended. I just wanted to acknowledge Tommy Edwards is a treasure that we have here in Pittsburgh. And I too went on to give the studio tour and visit several studios in Pittsburgh. And again, was reminded of the incredible talent we have in this community.
Under old business, we have a request to rezone property on 902. Make sure that Ben from our planning department will introduce the matter, which meant to public hearing last Monday.
Thank you. We have rezoning RAZ-2016-07. Patricia Marlowe and her siblings have proposed to upzone their property located at 221 Ford NC Highway 902 from RA2 to RA. Parcelled 6304 and 6298 are 7.625 acres altogether and have been zoned RA2 since the early 1990s. The siblings wish to subdivide the property, loved to them by their parents. However, the parcel is only large enough to accommodate approximately one acre per sibling, and the minimum lot size of the current zoning district is two acres, which is the reason why we're in southwest. The future land use plan designates the property for low-density residential, and the properties to the north, east, and west are currently zoned RA2, while the properties to the south are zoned both RA2 and RA. Now, the subdivision regulations require that there be a 30-foot easement to provide access for every three lots created without sufficient road drainage, so the owners will need another easement, which they are looking to run along the west side of the property. The subdivision regulations also require that the soil suitability for individual septic systems be demonstrated. Currently, the property has yet to be evaluated, but the owners are looking to have a PERC test done to determine feasibility. A public hearing was held on November 28th in which no citizen spoke. On December 5th, the planning board considered this rezoning at their meeting. The board contemplated placing a condition upon approval of the request, requiring that the land pass a PERC test. However, after some discussion, the board opted to recommend approval without the condition because even if all the proposed lots do not PERC, alternative engineered septic systems may still be an option. And while this option may cost more, the board felt that the choice of how much to pay and what to do with the land should be left up to the owners. Subsequently, the board recommended approval in a 5 to 0 vote. Staff also finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the future land use plan and recommends approval of the rezoning request. Any questions?
Thank you, Victor. Other questions? Several of us were at that planning board meeting, and Carl Schenker, who is a member of that planning board, really was the one who introduced the idea of opening the property up so that the areas could do what they wished to do, and off-site septic areas that might be instituted or might be allowed. There are several family members that live in the area already.
I do support this, and I think it is important to know that it is a zoning that allows for a greater density, a smaller lot size, but it does not grant anything beyond that, and there are still the technical solutions of roadway construction, driveway access, septic well, infrastructure that needs to be considered. So I think it's important for the folks who are looking for the rezoning to know that it is a zoning issue and not necessarily solving any technical issues in order to develop and build on the rock.
Yes, I've spoken with the applicants and they understand the difference between rezoning and the subdivision and septic.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? So the... Let's do the consistency statement first. So the motion's been made by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Jay Farrell, that the proposal does meet the consistency with land development. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries on. And then the actual rezoning itself. Motion to approve. Is there a motion by the board?
I move.
Move by Jay Farrell, seconded by Beth Wilson-Solley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries on. Thank you. We next have an ordinance to amend the fiscal year operating budget to reimburse Boller Realty for upsizing in the Chatham Forest development. Fred Royal will...
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an item that, I'll call it a legacy item, it's from 2003. There was a contract to upsize water mains in different phases of Chatham Forest, and fees were paid from Boller Realty, and reimbursements were made back to Boller Realty for upsizing pipes, upsizing and changing the material from PVC to ductile iron. And that was based on a recommendation of the then-town engineering firm that, I'm forgetting what their name is right this moment. In any case, I was asked by Mr. Gruzbek to look into the matter. The town did receive a request for the final reimbursement, so that's what I did, with Mr. Potteig assisting as needed, and we reviewed all the documents and obtained as-built drawings to confirm that the pipe, the up-sized pipes were actually installed, that they're engineered, certified as well. So they presented a cost sheet for the change in price from the initial pipes that were designed for the subdivision and as compared to the pipes that were upsized and changed in material for the benefit of the town. And they, the bottom line is there's a recommendation for reimbursement, a final reimbursement for Phase 5A, 5B, and 9, in the amount of $31,277. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions by the board?
I have one. How did we let this go 13 years?
That was my question. I don't know. I'm not certain. The only information I had was when Randy's father, before he passed away, he was working on it and it didn't occur due to his death. That's the only history I have. Before that, I don't know. The contract was written in 2003, though it was signed in 2003. So I honestly don't know how or what occurred.
Did Mr. Nessick look under this?
I have seen the contract, that's all I've seen.
Verifications of the engineering and up-sizing were reviewed by Mr. Royal, the current engineer, by Mr. Potteig, our utilities director, and there were also some attempts made in conversations with the engineer at Hydrostructures. Last, late last summer, early this fall, was when I had received the reimbursement request. The, just for tonight, what, if you so choose, as you can see after Mr. Royal's presentation, the revised request for reimbursement is $31,277. If you so choose, as I mentioned and discussed briefly at the previous meeting, an ordinance is also, a budget ordinance has also been prepared to review and inclusion in this package. If you agree to reimburse Boller Realty for this figure, then so enact the budget resolution to allow for that money to be made from capital reserves, which is the ample ability to do that. There's also my understanding, we also have Mr. Boller here, obviously, representing Boller Realty, if you may comment to some of the additional closeout procedures that are going on right now. And I think that puts the project and reimbursement front center.
So the closeout, everything has been needed or dedicated to the town, and the town's accepted the infrastructure?
Yeah.
And there's a contract with the town and Boller Realty for this reimbursement?
Yes.
And the pipe upsizing was requested by the town?
Yes, according to the documents I have.
Fred, in your presentation, you mentioned that Boller Realty had paid all of its fees. Were there any fees credited against this reimbursement?
They, for Phase 4, I believe?
I saw that and I didn't understand why that was a part of this package, but it brings to mind this question.
Right, I couldn't, that was, I guess, an initial request for reimbursement, Phase 4, and it was reviewed by Hydrostructures' engineer at the time, and they, I guess, modified the amount and then approved a recommended amount.
So, but what it also states is, instead of writing the check from the town to Boller Realty, fees were waived. Am I reading correctly?
That sounds correct, what I read.
So if Boller Realty has paid all of their fees, built the infrastructure, I mean, it seems to me the reimbursement's due, but were fees credited against that reimbursement? Is that my question?
So Boller paid a fee of $45,000, which was an access fee and a capital recovery cost fee. And based on the best of information I read, the only credit back to Boller was the, based on that memo from Hydrostructures.
For Phase 4.
And nothing else was ever credited or paid, as far as I know.
Can I ask you, Mr. Royal?
Yes. In fact, so Ally Williams, Carmen and King was the engineer that Fred was trying to recall, Darryl was the engineer who wrote that guy. And for Phase 1 and 2, the town, and my dad used to handle this, working with Darryl and that, they actually wrote a check back many, many years ago. Then in Phase 4, when David Hughes, and I had to go through all the records to find this, that's why I supplied that to correct the letter you're talking about. David Hughes just said, we're just going to credit where you are, but then nothing ever happened after that, so it just kind of was an abeyance. And then we turned everything over in 2007, 2008, we went through all that, and then my father said, oh, you know, we need to do this. He was working on it, then he got sick, then it just kind of went into abeyance, and then as we sold, so we're completely sold out, we don't own anything over there. My accountant said, whatever happened to this? And that's that letter that I submitted, he said, you still have this thing hanging from your father. And so I had to go back and look, and then I found out, well, you're right, it was right. It was never was a resolution, it was a contract. Lot was the one dealing with the contract. Leslie used to be at the meetings, but frankly, we weren't the ones doing that. He signed the original contract when he was a man. So my accountant said, you know, we're closing out the project with, you know, whatever losses are left, that's it, but you still have this hanging situation that was never resolved. And I had to go through all my dad's paperwork, and that's where I found it all, and it was, in fact, kind of in abeyance since he got sick in 2011. So I wouldn't have come back, I mean, when I was there, I wouldn't have been dealing with this, he would have been dealing with this. He would have been dealing with it. And so it's kind of... I apologize, but I wouldn't even know unless the accountant said, "What's the situation?" He was just finishing up the project. So that's my answer to the question.
So what we need to do here is actually approve the ordinance to amend the operating budget because the underlying contract has already been approved and authorized, the funding authorized. We just need to make the budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do I have a motion? I'll move.
Second?
Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Fierke. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries on. We are now at new business. We had moved to consent items over from the consent agenda to this. And so let us approach the traffic impact analysis. And do you have...
Well, I was... I guess I was... I am confused. The background discussion talks about the need for review of TIA's that have been submitted for...
I'll email our comments.
And it is a recommendation that we hire a firm from Charlotte for $25,000 to review those. And that is based on what is described as informal interviews with firms to come to the conclusion that this firm is the one to hire. And then when I read the contract, it... The contract talks about reviewing small area plans, traffic impacts, not actual project TIA's. Therefore, I'm confused as to what this firm is being recommended for hiring. I also ask the question, who's been reviewing our TIA's up until this point? Has the D.O.T. been doing that? And are they not able and willing to continue to do that?
Well, which part do you want me to take? You can handle the part on the contract. I can think I can handle the part on the D.O.T. I mean, we haven't... To my knowledge, we've had one TIA that's been submitted to this point for 15501, and D.O.T. has had primary responsibility for that one to this point, obviously. Staff also has a copy of it. And it's my understanding that the firm would also have the ability and responsibility to provide some feedback on that as we receive additional projects that are generated in the area. The... For... And I believe, moving forward, this is where Fred can step in. The TIA, the TIA's that would be associated, or any traffic analysis that would be associated with the small area plans, we would be relying on a third-party consultant, in this case, to help provide some advisory input on that as well.
Sure. I can give a little background. The small area plan was described in the scope. That was the known traffic impact assessment at the time of drafting the contract language. Since then, things have happened in different order. We've never received a small area plan. And we did receive a copy of a D.O.T. or a TIA that was related to 15501, which is a D.O.T. right-of-way, but it doesn't involve town driveways and town road connections. So I thought it was prudent to have that document in its entirety reviewed by a firm that can represent Pittsburgh. So you're correct. We did not change the language in the scope to address that particular TIA. The scope was envisioned to be not to exceed a amount of $25,000 with task orders specific to whatever review we would ask them to do. So now that we're here today, we don't have a small area plan. We have a small stack of traffic impact analyses from Chatham Park. And the vision is to have each one of those reviewed in specific and separate task orders with not to exceed a amount. But we set up $25,000 essentially as a starting point, and we would negotiate with this firm every task order's actual fee. That's the thinking at this point.
Will D.O.T. not review these?
Yes.
They not rely on them as opposed to provide a...
They reviewed the first one.
Right.
And I haven't talked to them about it or seen their comments or anything, but...
Well, I think I'd much rather try to use them as opposed to spend $25,000 on a firm, whether that be a cap or any amount. The other thing that I would like to do is, I would like to put this out for other firms to try to get this work and their request for qualifications on this kind of work. Because one of the things that, you know, I... In my reading of this, makes me think of other firms, is the fact that they're in Charlotte, and it says that they're not going to do any site visits, which I think is kind of odd. I think you'd like to look at the intersections you're studying, look at the road conditions, look at the environment. And I know there are plenty of firms in and around much shorter driving distance than to come from Charlotte. So I would like to put this out for a request for qualifications because, yes, we will be having a lot of these, and I think maybe we can get a pool of firms available on them all. So that's the reason I pulled this. And if we can get the D.O.T. to do their reviews on these three current projects, at the same time to put an RFQ out for further work. That's my premise. Which firm is in Charlotte? RS&amp;H.
RS&amp;H.
Okay. We just identified the memo as rallies, so...
Yeah, they have a rally office.
They do?
Yes.
Because they don't advertise that on the website?
I haven't seen it, but that's what I've heard. I can confirm that.
I would look for their...
Okay. They could have closed it or opened it, I'm not sure. The other issue is some of the TIA's involve town roads, local roads, that D.O.T. would have no jurisdiction over, so they would not be looking at our proposed internal street intersections as an example.
I'd like to tell you, the board, are there more questions? Or...
Fred, I have just one. City of Chatham Park, Phase 1. Is that part of the road that's coming out 64 East?
Phase 1... There's three TIA's. So I think Phase 1 is the one out by Bojangles, the large intersection up there. So that's what Phase 1 would be. The other one is the one you mentioned, off of Thompson Street. I have one for that one. And I have another one for lots 2 and 3 over by Freedom Parkway. So we have three currently.
Can I get some information? Though there's some past meetings on that Thompson Street, 64 East?
Yep.
Is that from D.O.T.?
Traffic information?
Yeah. Wasn't it some early lane or something that changed and ended up there?
I think we asked at one of the most recent meetings how, when I'm looking at Bailey's Academy coming in on Thompson Street, that there was going to be a lot of work that would be needed there.
Right.
But I don't know... I don't know that there... I don't remember seeing any documentation of it now.
I think we saw drawings referring to this, introducing the idea, but I don't think we've seen any traffic analysis.
And we've done one site plan review of that, first proposal.
My pleasure, the board. Is the RFQ process requires notice and advertisement?
Yes.
They're saying no, they're saying it?
Are you putting RFQ out?
You don't... It doesn't fit the threshold for requiring notice.
Now, how do you advertise to firms?
Yeah, you can advertise to the firms, but it's not an official posting in a newspaper.
Because of the size of the bid?
It doesn't require a formal bid process, I guess is what I'm... Not saying very...
The threshold, that is $30,000?
Well, if this would not be a bid, it's simply a request for qualifications so that interested firms could say, "Here are my qualifications, I'm interested."
I think we would take the most qualified bidder, but we just have to document the process that we're using and keep records. And when we make the decision, everything needs to be transparent, but it's not... It, you know, it doesn't meet the threshold for an actual, you know, formalized bid process like we would for a small enough that it can be done with an RFQ process in-house.
So I'm interested in seeing as great a rigor as possible on this analysis for these potential impacts for the three different areas that you've mentioned, Fred. And given what Brian has said about the threshold at a level, I'm kind of ambivalent about whether or not we need to actually go out for quotations. If you've spoken to several firms, on the other hand, if we have the opportunity to ask D.O.T. to do the work with us now, they've got capacity, then maybe there won't be much of a delay. We can work on that while also seeking competitive quotations using our RFQ process.
Can I clarify? An RFQ is a request for qualifications. Professional services are not something like construction contracts. You don't get a price. That may be a factor, what their hourly rates are or whatever, but you're looking for the qualifications. And engineers, unfortunately, have different strokes than most other services. And so the RFQ process is a way in which you can at least evaluate the qualifications of potential professionals in that capacity. And so you don't get a price because in this particular case, you don't know what it is that they're going to be expected to do. It's, you know, project by project or task by task or how referrals want to qualify. So if you solicited the request for qualifications, you would get, you know, biographies and CVs and stuff like that and experience, you know, that sort of information, and somebody would still have to make a rational decision about who you use.
Thank you, Mr. Mestick. That clarification is helpful. I do appreciate that. Given that, and it leads me to ask, do you anticipate that by sending RFQs to a number of different firms that you might get different response, more interested parties? Or is that the nature of the market right now that RS&amp;H was the responsive firm?
We would get other responses. I would have to do some due diligence, pick three to five firms, advertise to them if they're interested to send a qualification statement. So then, you know, it's a time-consuming process, but it could be done.
And at the end of that process, you'd have a pool of qualified engineers to be strong on a project-by-project basis? So that's my recommendation.
And I actually...
Don't you go that route?
I would say recommendation, especially with the TIA and the state being able to do that. I'd certainly rather for the state to do that than you $25,000 to pay for some of the... If you get the state to do it.
I'm sorry. I'll just have to clarify. I don't know what D.O.T. would be willing to do if it's not a D.O.T. jurisdiction.
Well, if it's not within D.O.T., sure, they would have to have someone. Otherwise, it could be better to utilize, in my view, the state. Also, in reference to, you said there were telephone interviews, informal interviews via telephone with locally-based engineering firms. Perhaps you can also ask those engineering firms to submit their resumes, their qualifications, so forth and so on, because I would certainly be interested in a pool to look at in reference to that, or that staff look at in reference to this work.
If I could just ask one more question, you dealt with the RFQ, but I really want... You mentioned selecting from a pool. So we put out... We cast a net before an RFQ, and then we take those statements and qualifications. And typically, what we would do is, according to the letter of the law, select the most qualified bidder. But what you're suggesting is selecting from a pool, so alternating those people that...
That's possible. And so if you collect a series of credentials from engineering firms to do the work, and you might say, well, you know, four of these firms or three of these firms meet our criteria, and therefore, we would like to keep them in our pool of available firms so that when a project comes up, you can say to those four firms, "Here's a TIA, give us a clue. What would it cost you to do the work to review it?" The other services that, frankly, they could provide is not only reviewing the TIA, but working with the developer to establish the scope of the TIA. Because that's an important piece of work. And so having that expertise, a pool of available consultants to help the town is one way to do it. And I think right now, it would be a great way for us to do it.
Okay, so given that process, does that require... Would those require exemptions every time we went with another... Would we have to go back to the board for a resolution for exemption to many books? You follow me?
Yes.
The amount involved here would allow the town not to do what you want it to do. So if we do what it is that you want it to do, and advertise for the RFQs, and you get a list of five people who presumably are the reason for qualifying, and then they look at one TIA, but the next one comes in a month later. You're suggesting that we have another contract with a second person?
That's an option.
Again, assuming it's less than $50,000, you couldn't exempt yourself from having to go get RFQs at that point a month from now, assuming that they're still qualified and whoever was the key man has not gone somewhere else and all that sort of thing. With the amount involved here, the purpose of this exemption is to eliminate doing what you're suggesting the town do, is to do the advertising and request the qualifications. But if that's what you all want to do, then they do it. And you can cross the bridge about number two whenever it comes up.
$50,000 being the appointed threshold for exemption. You've got four firms that are using $200,000 of exemption.
Per project.
And only one would get the project. And the next project might go to another one.
Okay, well, then you'd be doing the same thing for each project?
We'll be having a resolution for each project to exempt each one of those consultants from the many books, which is what this was doing.
Well, although that may be in some people's eyes, I think it does create... Does it not create sort of more continuity in the pool of people who... I mean, we have no mandate at Chatham Park for a project where transit's got to do it. And so this is going to be an important... And so, this is going to be an important piece in what we do and such as can be defined.
And it's one of the Board's pleasures, and we can do it, it's really, I think it's kind of the issue with the many, with many brooks exemptions coming back, is it's just we have to make sure that we time it out properly, you know, there's, there's no harm in doing that, it's, it's just making sure that I'll have the timing.
Thanks to me, inefficient, if you, if you, instead of working with one firm who actually makes, takes the effort to get to know our traffic side at the town, it seems like they just have the development expertise if the same firm works on the various projects that we have going on. If we're highly individual ones, we're paying the each one to learn about the town's issues. It doesn't sound like a very efficient way of doing things, it seems inefficient to have one firm that does it all, if they're not paying a different firm each time to relearn all the things that you have to do one time to get one firm.
Well, I think you could choose the same firm, that will satisfy your desire. What I'm suggesting is that we put more RFQ out to advertise to qualified firms to get their interest.
I mean, that could be the best, to have a firm that's, that's the name of the town. But, that's the market, that would be not the ideal.
I would just like to add, I met with Dan Lamontagne from the county, and he said that they recently went through a process where they have six firms, as you're saying, Commissioner Fiocco, that essentially does this, and he pitched me to those, and it's, I don't believe it's in the aggregate, it's, it's every, it's up to fifty thousand, but they could do it the way Commissioner Foley that you're suggesting, but these are surveying engineering firms that a lot of times are little projects, like eight thousand dollars to go to look at this, or ten for that, but they did the whole process that you're describing, and that stayed pretty well, so, which I'm sure you'd be happy to show, Fred, but it's the same thing you're describing.
Well, it's, that's similar, it's a similar process in other municipalities as well.
Is there, is there a decision here that could count as formal motion?
My question, if we put an RFQ out for these services, and that we approach the NC DOT regarding the review of these three TIA's? I'll speak in favor of the motion, or maybe there's a second, a second and speak in favor of the motion, especially with regard to the latter part, but I think that there's going to be some sections of each of these TIA's which are relevant to DOT, and I think, whatever, and that, that would be very reassuring to have them work on this as well.
Are the other statements or questions by the Board? A motion made by Michael Pianco, seconded by John Vonas. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Does motion creation am? We've also moved from the consent agenda sewer allocation request as new business item number one.
The reason I pull this one is, in, in the recommendation, because it would have proven to be a consent, it stated that town's policy is to require the construction to begin within one year of the request. And what we've typically been doing was requiring that site plan or preliminary plat be submitted within one year of the request, and that the site plan or preliminary plat remain valid. So, in fact, that could give somebody two years, in fact, it could give them three years if they request an extension of approval. And so, I wanted to be consistent, that's what we have been doing with our allocations, so I recommend that we do that here as well. And then perhaps also, we did have a policy where we required certain amount of information to be presented to the Board, you know, sketch plans, you know, concept plan, that Board could review when allocating sewer, and since we are still in this phase when every gallon we allocate, we want to do the work that is there to do when I sit on the sideline, but some of our allocations are doing those things. You know, I think it'd be good to require some additional information so we can judge the policy. And perhaps, Fred, you could, Brian, you could work on, taking portions of that policy and do concept on that. So, I would make a motion to approve these applications with caveat that the allocation is valid as long as the site plan or preliminary plat is valid, and that either be submitted for approval within one year of this allocation.
Second. Move by Michael Pianco, seconded by that willing to hold it.
Discussion?
If there's further discussion.
So, Commissioner Fiocco, I'm a little bit confused because I thought I heard you speaking to, to both sides of it, that, that there is a benefit to the town of having development proceed sooner rather than later. And, and I thought you were speaking kind of in a way as it's less than desirable that our current policy would allow multiple extensions without development and without utilization in the sewer allocation, but then I think your motion was to go with the more permissive policy. Our policy does not allow multiple extensions, it allows a one-time extension within one year. So, our, our site plans are valid for a year, and oftentimes, you've got a complicated project, it's difficult to get all the other permits required to execute at that point within one year's time. And that's why most municipalities will give four years for approval. Two is very common, four is quite frankly, the triangle, very common. So, what this says is, within one year, submit for approval. And approval gets usually, from the town's perspective, three to six months. Is that right, Ted? Is that right? Three to one, three to six months for a site plan?
Yeah.
And then, they would have one year from that date, unless they requested an extension, and it would be a one-time extension. So, basically, we give those two to three years, and if they did not perform, then it would be, would be sent back to the town. Whereas right now, we have agreements that don't have any subsidy on at all.
Okay. So, those are separate agreements from this allocation.
Allocation.
Allocation, okay. I mean, those were, those were specifically made on a different process.
Yeah. All right. Then may I ask you a repeat question? The question is that we approved the allocation and the period of validity to re, of the allocation to remain valid as long as the site plan or preliminary plat is valid, and that either site plan or preliminary plat be submitted for approval within one year of this allocation. That's the second. Thank you.
So, you've heard the motion in the second, and is there further discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Does, oh, motion creation am? I believe that brings us to additional updates in the report, and the man?
Okay. We received late last week, received some feedback from Sanford on the Sanford Forest name in quotes that you've provided to the last, and so, I'm not really sure whether, I would imagine we're in our scheduling, probably a separate meeting with Sanford to work on a couple of those recommendations, just to make sure that we're clarified on what it is that there, there's a guffing. So, hopefully progress, and you can leave me on that. Ideally, we'd like to come back to you with some sort of idea with what, what it will take from City of Sanford. Sanford also, City Manager informs me, has not discussed, my knowledge, has not discussed this agreement in any sort of detail yet, so we would, before we go into weeds, so to speak, Mr. Eggers asked if he'd go into weeds with his board too, so that's the stuff that I'll. The renovation plan, we have some language on, on the MOU, and we're reviewing that. The development agreement, the home stock, we'll hand out some materials at this point. So, while Jeff's handing those out, these are the full binders of the development agreement that was required to be submitted by Chatham Park on December eighth. These, these are also electronically available on the town's website. The, the development agreements themselves are an item that, according to the PDD, must be reviewed and approved. It's going to operate really close to what a tax amendment would operate, how a tax amendment would operate within our zoning, in that it will require staff review, likely some, some consultant activity as well, planning board discussion, public, town board, public hearing, and then ultimately, town board review and approval as well. As you go through these, and I'm sure you're going to run right home and read these tonight, but as, as you go through these, you'll notice that it looks very similar to what we have in the additional elements, so if, if the additional elements are referenced as a, as a, as a major component of the development agreement, so it's the, I believe the intention to get as far into the additional elements if not completed, which could take place ideally as early as, as March, but will take as long as they need to take before, and I would like that we would recommend any kind of review and approval. So, this is really the, the first step, it's a required component of the Chatham Park PDD master plan. It was submitted on time, the town ordinance governing development agreements also required a pre-application meeting, and that was also held with the applicant on December seventh, where we reviewed the executive summary that you have there, they at that point had not submitted full binder. And we had the pleasure of reviewing that document with school and representative from schools and County Manager as well. And so, we look forward to dealing with that more on this. So, it's, again, a major, major component, another, another thing that we'll be working on, but it doesn't require, obviously, your, your approval anytime soon, it's the beginning of a, beginning of a process, kind of, I'm just going to add. And certainly, as you look at it, please feel free to forward any questions or comments as we, as we go forward, and we'll, we'll adjust them at that point. We, we all likelihood will also be calling on Mr. Masek and possibly some other, some other third-party assistance as well on the, as we go forward. So, it's one of the bigger development agreements that I've seen, so, I mean, it's fairly simple, and like I said, references additional elements, a lot of heavy work, I think, is done in the additional element process, but still a major component. Sanitary sewer, influence infiltration, video inspection was completed, hydrostructures, I think looked at hours of tape, exciting video of our, some of our underground structures and sanitary sewer lines, and they're forwarding those comments to the contractor hearing and your remark. We're looking at slipline construction at any point, at any point here in the near future. Signage will, will be placed on site, on spread, when do we expect the signage to be placed? They included, included in your packet, I apologize, nothing up on the screen in your packet, there's a mock-up of the signage, one of the pieces that will be placed on site so that, so that the public is aware of what's going on, where it's going on. And, and so, we'll be doing something similar, as I know, in the update for the sidewalk projects as well. The, again, just that meant out there to make sure that folks are kind of aware of what is happening, how much is involved with it, what the cost and the players will be, and I think we also have, we also have contact numbers on this as well. The elementary school sidewalk, and eighty-seventh sidewalk, contracts been approved, executed. We look up, we, we're looking at construction, again, coming up anytime. I think we have a, a pre-time meeting this Thursday, so.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So, it would happen anytime after that, we're looking at completing it by Valentine's Day. Both consultants still excited about getting that one. Electric capable charging stations, collected, collected some, some possible consultants on that. We have not received any funding agreement from Duke Energy, I was expecting that, actually expecting to have that now, I don't know, I'm not really sure where that is yet, but hopefully we will have that, that from them and then wrapped up as soon as I can get it, and, and keep, keep that work moving forward. Fifteen five oh one, widening, we've talked about this during updates in previous couple meetings, we had staff attended a scope meeting in Raleigh last week. We, again, this is the project with widen fifteen five oh one from Wallace North to Powell Place Lane. It, it appears as if the project will be left in two thousand and nineteen, construction expected in two thousand and twenty. As it stands right now, we're looking at inclusion of sidewalks on both sides and bicycle lanes on both sides. We're working through some of the cost issues on that, whether, you know, whether sufficient to, whether, how, right of way would be acquired by DOT. They have indicated that they would expect the first public meeting to take place here in Pittsburgh in two thousand, in May of two thousand and seventeen, so we'll have a chance to kind of get at that locally, a little bit more detail, and as that comes, we'll make sure that's well advertised, and I'm sure it'll be well attended. Curb installation, we talked a little bit about that at the last update, it's looking like that's actually going to start tomorrow over on the north, last corner of Hillsborough and Salisbury. It's, it's not expected that we'll be shutting down, or the contractor will be shutting down the road, and it's supposed to take place after five P.M. So, we will, we will keep an eye on that one. Lightings Day at Breakfast was, that was, that was an event that was held last year, hosted by the county. They've invited the mayors and the town managers of Chatham County to attend. The idea is to share information on legislative issues, if we have anything we want to forward to discussion, we can certainly do that, so let's keep that in mind. Certainly, for any ideas you have, be oriented, discuss those at the next, at the next meeting. Paul Place, we, as you're, as you're aware, the developer, East West Partners, has this past fall went through and completed many of the punch list items that were out as far as service things, curb repairs, sidewalk repair. But, there's a couple items left over as far as, as far as making some, some final improvements to what Fred calls the wet ponds, actually, Fred probably had a more scientific name for that, but it's good, wet ponds would be all right. But anyway, we're, we're looking at having East West Partners fix some of the slopes that we must see, and I think there's some other cracks, sidewalk cracks, still need to be fixed. Once, once those, the stormwater ponds, I want to say are going to be owned by the HLA or more importantly, not the town, the sidewalk. The sidewalks, of course, will be brought over to the town, but only after, only after we've inspected it and signed up. Commissioner Pielco talked a little bit about downtown, downtown stormwater rain garden, BMP, and as he indicated, Fred and Commissioner Pielco, who are key with downtown business owners, received some input for design. We're looking at advertising, a bit in February 2017, construction beginning the following month. We have a town hall BMP that we've talked about, that will be located in a corner from the corner of this building, along that way behind the building, and we're looking at that being started in February 2017. That would be done by town, by town staff as much as possible. We don't know if we're going to need any other equipment. Backhoe, we have, that may be sufficient.
We'll have to rent something.
Something.
A backhoe.
A backhoe different.
A track hoe, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we will let you know when we're ready to begin on that. Town Lake Park.
Ryan, let me just mention something about the BMP. The design groups have the drawings back incorporating some of the recommendations from the mainstream folks, and I think there's still some minor coordination issues that'll come back to you guys. If not the major, I think we're close to getting one.
It still fits within what we can talk about.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Town Lake Park, back last, early last fall, I received a couple of phone calls on the pond. I don't know locally if it's always been referred to as Town Lake, or what, Fred and I were trying to kind of figure out what the nomenclature was for this project, but you recall the existing drain outlet has been quagged, it hasn't really performed consistently, and it nearly drained empty back in September. And so we began working with a firm to kind of take a look at what, what could be done to help maintain proper elevations, water elevations on, and we'll come back to you with those. Grant funding, I think, is the goal with this, because I feel like there's candidates out there for that. But we want to maintain a healthy, normal water elevation out there as opposed to the fluctuating that's going on in the recent, near, recent past. So we'll keep you updated on that as well. You'll recall, also, two updates. We talked about the Haw River intake and the need for permanent power. At the, at the intake station, the problem being that when the power goes out, for example, back on October 9th was, I think, when the hurricane happened, we did lose power for a limited period of time. We had, we had rented power in some locations, and we moved that location, generator from that location, that generator never arrived because of storms. And so the problem that we would have had at that point in time is that we would have been able to operate with our water distribution system at all points. We have been able to distribute the water that we had already treated, we'd be able to continue to treat water that we had stored, but we wouldn't be able to pump additional water from the Haw River if the power outage continued for a lengthy period of time. Please do, thanks to Mr. Fickers' word, the water treatment supervisor, that we now have, we now have those generators installed, worked up, and we could be good to go on that. So I think this follows up on some generator work that we placed in other locations, notably at the distribution system, side or interior. So that's definitely a good thing, I think, not only for our distribution system as a whole, but for emergency service in times of critical danger, when you're under weather storms, hurricanes, and so forth. And with that, I think I will head out, and hoping for any questions, comments, concerns.
Any questions for Brian Grisbet?
Yeah, that was a great update, really, to stop Neil. Thank you.
I'm sure I'm forgetting something, and hopefully you'll bring up.
So, yeah, I'm pleased to hear that you're, in addition to Mr. Messick's capable assistance in evaluating this, I'm pleased to hear that we're also interested in some outside third-party. And I'm wondering if you might specifically speak with folks at school government. David Owens and Adam Lovelady, in particular, have been referred to me, and I'd be real curious to hear who they would recommend, and curious to hear their insights as well.
Yeah, there's, I've looked at some firms that do development agreements. Yeah, and that's a great, that's a great point. I'm kind of curious to find out, you know, the specific flavor of our development agreements probably will be different than some of the others out there, so what kind of firms can help us best. So, yeah, we will look for that.
And a broader issue, it occurred to me because we, those of us who've been observing the additional elements review committee meetings have heard that group of people hungering for detailed legal insights into the juxtaposition of the UDO and the additional elements, and the master plan, and the additional elements. And so I wonder if there's a broader need for legal assistance.
First of all, those questions never been asked of me, and I'd be glad to answer those questions if they were, but that's something that we need to talk about as far as UDO in general and the additional elements as well. If that's something, you all have never decided to do third-party review of the additional elements for any issues, and probably we ought to.
I thought we had authorized council to focus on some of the tougher issues like border housing and, of course, that's another call when we were creating the committee, that we would give them staff and consultants I need.
I believe that's correct. The additional housing is an element that probably does need some third-party review. I'm not, I might need some clarification, I guess your boss is, but that is, that is one that we're going to be looking at a lot closer with other factors.
Mr. Messick, did you have further thoughts to share, just like you were?
No, I mean, whatever the specific question is, if somebody would, you know, be able to address that issue, I'd be glad to give them an answer, and if we need to go further, then we can go further.
Like, in other words, what sort of questions or issues would the committee or others request for legal counsel review?
So I'm trying to recall now, and I didn't get my afternoon cup of tea, but, yeah, I don't think I'm going to try and hazard a fore-recollection of it, but there were definitely questions brought up about the, the master plan versus the additional elements, whether or not the additional elements is, I think it's in the general provisions, is consistent with the suggestion in the master plan, the language in the master plan, that Chatham Park will accept and embrace ordinances as the town of Pittsburgh passes them in the future.
I don't think that's what the master plan says, that all ordinances will be accepted. I think there, the master plan accepts the uses that are delineated in the master plan's health, so those are fixed, the 22,000 dwelling units is fixed, the 22 million square feet of commercial space is fixed. Those are things that are in place, and there may be some other issues that can change over time in terms of public health, safety, welfare, but, and that's what, one of the purposes for the development agreement is to fix the law that's applicable to Chatham Park. So when you get to that, you'll see that that's what it addresses in a lot of large respects. So, I mean, there may be some issues that, that will change over time, or can change over time, and there's some that are going to have to be fixed, and that's why you're doing the additional elements in the first place. If there's a particular issue that is involved in that, they're all going to be part and parcel of the same project. So the development agreement incorporates the additional elements, incorporates the master plan, incorporates smaller area plans that you haven't even seen yet, all of those are going to be part and parcel of the same project, too. So obviously, the goal is to be consistent, but the master plan was the first step, and these other parts of that process are going to add, are going to amplify and add, you know, more detail and more focus on different kinds of aspects of that. So, you know, this question about what trumps what, isn't that, that's a different matter.
Yeah, I think that's a question that I've heard repeatedly, especially because it does sound as though there is a different tone in the additional elements than in the master plan as regards to the question of future ordinances, future town ordinances. And the UDO in particular, the question from the review committee was, can we have an analysis? Members were eager to see an analysis of additional elements and a UDO side by side. And I think that that was presented, I tried to review the audio from last two weeks ago meeting when I was sick, and I apologized, friends, for having norovirus, but that, I think, was presented by Mr. Nass as one of the recommendations. Was it not?
Well, since the UDO is a moving target, it's, you know, it's really kind of hard to compare apples and apples, but, I mean, to some extent, I think Jeff is, or Roger is certainly capable of doing something like that.
It just seems, when I was attending the additional element committee, they seemed to have still a great question about the hierarchy, and it, and it appears that every time they would talk about something, we would have to tell them, well, that covered the master plan, or that covered another document, and so all of a sudden, that job, which seemed only slightly overwhelming at the beginning, is now becoming truly overwhelming because they're not really sure what trumps what, to that expression. So is that your stance from having attended that last meeting? There's a lot of, it felt like that game that you play as a child. You know, where the bean is under the walnut, you know, the question, there came up to be another walnut, and they couldn't put the bean in it.
Is that useful to you?
I sense they are, having some confusion, but, well, and I think it can be clarified. I mean, the master plan is a plan for this specific acreage. The additional elements are refinement of the master plan, and essentially will act as an ordinance on that acreage, and that's what these planned developments are. They basically allow the developer the opportunity to craft uses and regulations that will apply to them specifically, where they don't address specific things, then other laws and other rules will apply. And the town will be responsible for enforcing policy. So knowing in fact what the UDO says for a project outside of Chatham Park and as well as inside of Chatham Park, but then also looking at the additional elements in the master plan and the development agreement as to how it applies to this acreage and allows that project to develop. So that's, that's the entirety of it.
The theory of the additional elements, for example, is to provide more detail and more specificity than was in the master plan, and some of those elements are not even in the master plan altogether. So, so you're getting more than was in the master plan in some respects, and the master plan addresses the UDO, it addresses the health issues in terms of stormwater issues, you know, if the state problem changes to the building code, then Chatham Park is going to have to comply with that. We are, too. Everybody's going to have to do that. If a, if stormwater changes from the state, you know, Chatham Park's going to have to comply with that, too. So, I mean, there are lots of things that are going to apply across the board. There are going to be some things that are only going to apply in Chatham Park. If the town chooses to make a lighting provisions in the UDO similar to what's in Chatham Park, then that's the town's priority to do that. If you think that their plans are, you know, something that's worthy of incorporating into something for the rest of the town, then that's fine, too. So to the extent that there's a conflict between either what we already have, which there could be a lot of conflicts for that, or what we want to have in the UDO and what's in the additional elements, that surely, I mean, they ought to be identified to some extent, you know, to whatever extent that's possible, and reconciled if possible, and if not, then you need to know why.
Or, yes, or intentionally not reconciled, but intentionally not where perhaps the PDD is exempt or insupervised by nature of the additional elements.
And, again, it may be, you know, a specific instance or a specific reference by reference. I mean, I don't know that it's a blanket across-the-board kind of thing, that, so it's going to depend, I think, a lot on what it is that deserves some specifics.
We have a development within our town that fights or has this issue, has this quality to it, and it's helpless, because they established a set of rules that applied specifically to that acreage as well, in addition to the town ordinances and how they implement. So they talked about bumpers, they talked about street signs, they talked about on-street parking, they talked about parks in their, and those kinds of things that apply specifically to Powell Place, and will until it's modified. When the state of North Carolina says, well, Jordan rules are back in play, and you have some stormwater circle, if they've got a project, a development within their boundary, they then have to meet that standard. So it will be a dynamic situation, and as Mr. Messick mentioned, the building code, you know, we can't zone out the building code when it changes or it applies to all buildings. So it is, it's a dynamic situation, and we, the town does have a script for it.
Okay. Is there a further discussion on the question of legal review? I have some other things on Brian's update.
I mean, we can, we're prepared to go ahead with the third-party review anyway.
It's a pleasure that you said that, so.
I think we're pretty, I just, just to clarify there, you know, like, what, what specific issues were we talking about? I think we can get it back, but, yeah, in general sense.
Right. I'll try and submit questions, and I'll encourage the additional review committee to.
Yeah, maybe that's a side conversation, but I think the overall issue of third-party consulting on this and some other issues you asked me, I know that we're moving on.
Excellent. Just wanted to thank you very much for the reassurance from DOT that indeed we're getting sidewalks and bike paths on both sides of 15501 wide. I think that's really good news to hear. I think that's really good news to hear. And on the EV stations, I just wanted to express my own opinion that there may be circumstances where the EV charging station funding is deemed by staff to be inadequate to do a proper job. In those cases, I, as one commissioner, can be very open to budget expenditures because I think that that's an infrastructure investment that will receive a lot of wear and tear. And that's not something we want to go cheap on. I think it's very different from a signpost or even a kiosk. It's a different manner of usage, and it's very much presenting face to the town to, an opportunity to provide an attraction. Thanks for hearing.
All right, well, that lends then a great to your commissioner concern. Jay Carroll, do you have anything?
I just want to echo the citizens' vote on the annex. I think that's a great idea. We do a nice, beautiful open space area with some parking would be great. I'd really like to see us push toward that. That's about, other than this development agreement, do we have any CD form or video? I'm usually like, I don't know if I have to read all that.
Jeff will, Jeff will, I'll volunteer Jeff to read every word of it.
The development agreement part of itself is not very long, but most of that is the master plan, the additional elements, which are all, that is exhibits to the development agreement itself.
Yeah, that's true.
So it's really not as bad as it looks because you've seen all of the other things before.
Yeah, the majority of it actually is. The map paper on the additional elements. You know, I see by the table of contents that the first six pages are different, but other than that, I just feel sorry for the legal secretary that had typed the legal description of the seven thousand acres. Having done that is my primary profession for a long time.
I have something else to come on, I just, something for me to move today. But I agree, I am very excited about the annex being removed and having that, because I remember a big consult with the county manager, that it would be downtown with the deed, and I think that would be sufficient for him to have that part of it. But then we need to do the whole of that.
And have the authority left?
Yes, she was.
How do we get going on that dialogue?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, actually, I'd be with the county manager about four o'clock on Friday, we should talk a little bit about this, went away, this conversation. I sort of started late last week, you know, if, you know, if you want, need to follow up and give some specific information on what the county plans that their next steps can report back to you, and certainly do that, then we can figure out more. But if we want to put a larger group together, we're likely to add to the conversation. Jim Crawford asked, because citizens are approaching them, and said, you know, it'd be great if the town would present to the county and say, yes, we agree, we want to do these things, we want to work together. We want to embrace a bigger vision for downtown and ask for their cooperation and participation with us as we embark on trying to realize the downtown vision plan. And to that end, we've asked for the Main Street program to be there Monday the 19th to express the same, the PBA to express the same. I chatted briefly with Mayor Perry about her making similar plea and request and getting the EDC there to say, so that we can say, town, the towns, we want to work together to revitalize downtown. There are big property owners in downtown who would really appreciate if you would take a bigger view, longer view, take this opportunity than it is to invest wisely.
I agree with what I was thinking of. I was contacted by citizens who were concerned about some exchange on the championship. Apparently, a lot of people are having a notion that, you know, parking is something that the official parking plan, and obviously people do not like that idea, so I turned that out, but we finally talked about our idea. So that's something, there's been a lot of discussions like that.
Other than, I'd like to express my appreciation, of course, for the job that staff, town manager, chief of police, everyone that did for us, but the Christmas parade, it was great, the float was wonderful, and I really do appreciate all of you all did. And that's.
You did the float, is that correct? You did?
Yes, you did.
You did, and it was great.
Great work.
Great.
Chance of flight, it's, it was incredible.
And all the candy. We really do appreciate all of you all doing it.
I'll echo that. You put it in wonderful words.
I love that the county ran out of candy, that we shared our candy.
You were working together.
And Chief Grushfield, I also appreciate your staff, the officers, their work. It was, it was clear that there was very good presence there. Did I also see someone from Liberty?
Yeah, we, North Carolina's staring into mutual aid agreements with other agencies to have them come assist. And just because of the traffic control issues we have with major US highways going through our route. And Sanford's a good example, while security is a, is a, is a very important concern for me. And so I reached out to other agencies and got some more help.
Great, great work. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I'd have known yesterday morning it was your birthday, I would have done something. Well, I just would have done it for the reason of doing it, but I didn't know, honestly.
Well, I understand your 16-year-old daughter was pressed into service as far as helping with the float, so please tell her that we were.
Yeah, my daughter was a consultant and helped that great.
Just to add to what Commissioner Pielco said, in contrast with Commissioner Foley, I asked, based on what Chairman Crawford and the county commissioner that expressed back to us and others that spoke, I think the more of you that could go to that meeting on the 19th and just say, we'd like to work together so that Mayor Perry wasn't just going there alone, all it's gonna say, there's no commitments, it's just, we want to work together, that's all they want to hear. Because their question was, we've gotten a bunch of emails from the PBA, we've gotten a bunch of information from Main Street and others, but we want to hear from the town, but none of us can officially speak to the town. And you have Mr. Bruce Beck is your chief executive essentially, and Mayor Perry. But I think if you guys would go to support, you know, just come at the beginning and say we're into this, it's a great opportunity. Again, all the details are probably gonna be worked out between Mr. Bruce Beck and Rene Vasco coming back to you guys. So that was the message you charged with Michael Guy.
It appears that at this point, we might need to go into closed session pursuant to NPGS 1.3-18, the 11A5. Is there a motion to do so? Move your ideas back, second by Taylor Walden.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. You want to? Just about you.
Commissioner Foley.